Everybody yell.
I'm gonna tree down this time.
Did you print agendas this time?
Yes. Jason scheduled Dennis' appointment for four fifteen. I got a meeting in five.
Well, he got tied up in traffic and they all just catched him to bed.
Thank you.
Oh, sorry.
Morning, put the caps in bed.
I know.
The FBI was looking for that.
Should I give this to you or to Adam?
I got it for a couple days.
Alright.
You got an extra paycheck in there?
I do, I do.
It's empty. I had bills I wanna give to you.
Last one.
Adam, this is our communication between me and Kate. Thank you ma'am.
With the envelopes, huh?
All the bills go in here and I go put it in their star door.
Yeah.
And then I run.
It's safer that way, huh?
You better believe it.
Thank you. Thank you.
Boodle-olli. Gracias, Kate.
How much time I got left? Two whole minutes.
Two minutes.
This is Eric Manner.
I've met Eric before.
I thought you looked familiar.
Just very tall, hanging over his head.
Okay, all they found.
Alright. I don't know what's...
Are those SOPs?
Yes.
You had them.
You gave them to me.
I give Denny hell, I think he had them.
It's been a number of years.
Nope, I have them.
Just seeing you off and on since then.
Yeah, Kate, I thought Denny asked for them.
I think he...
And he kept going through and buying anything. So I found one in there which have so much...
Oh, yeah, that's not helpful. Yes.
You know, gone.
Yes. Alright.
So the last thing on my... Sally Mae has to confirm that I actually attended Northern Kentucky. Which I find weird orders that like the loans approved. Let's make sure you...
Yes.
Uh, but then that I pull the trigger on looks and all that stuff next week. Eight hours of that until the test.
When is it, Taylor?
Twenty-seventh and twentieth.
Where, uh, where do you have to go?
I actually, uh, was asked that the other day. I haven't looked it up. It's somewhere in Indianapolis.
Okay.
Designated testing center. Took my LSAT, uh, in Bloomington now.
Cause my shoe size? You got socks? Oh, you want socks? No, I don't want socks.
Probably shouldn't start that down.
We're not, we're mildly not. A rush, just, just I am.
No, probably forgot about it till it filled the chicken.
Guys, print this over there.
Not at the table, no, we're texting.
No, I know.
Or Adam, or you go, or you want?
I see that right here too.
Yeah, that's true.
My chair is there for you and turn the other face to the wall.
You are so mean to me.
For her, I told you I'd get retired in December thirty-first, divorce in February first.
Oh. After fifty-eight years.
So you could've waited all that long.
He'll be busy running around anyway.
Yeah, we got a lot of grass.
Contact your yard?
Yeah, he likes to do.
Something like that.
He might be busy this afternoon.
Yeah.
Is it just the top one? No, there's another one back there.
Yeah, and the monthly fund balance. Thank you. That's my goal.
Where's the third item? I guess two, where's the third?
So there should be the front page for town fire territory. The second page of voice and then the third page is the all town balance. The town, and there should be one of the five, five territory. It might be behind the balance.
Was it a flat? Or is it in this?
No, here it is. There's no signature line for it.
Oh. That's what I was looking for.
Yeah.
He's at Mall's Corner. What is that?
Oh, can we send Hunter?
I did.
Did you leave the fund balance? Here's the balance of the higher territory count.
Decided it.
Yeah.
Uh, not really.
Thank you.
Where's Mall's Corner? Oh, up there.
Proprint, yeah.
That's from Mall's Corner. Why is that? Do you see a house there?
Why is it called Mall's Corner? I don't know.
Cause that farm was always owned by the Mall family.
There you go.
There's many erect. I got hit head on there twice with my truck on that corner.
Good luck in here.
When we come on issue, you know, I'll already stop. Bam! They never slow down. You probably don't remember when it used to be this like this. You say this, come up here and then this.
Right now, a ninety degree.
Perfect ninety degrees. You seen the cat today?
Yeah.
Wet road, they used to have big tree. Quarter foots in there about that take around. Yeah, that was a beautiful farm years ago. I put it in someone else's car. It's gonna be a mess for traffic when that hospital opens upstairs. Yeah, I bet they have a direct week up there when that... Especially on wet roads.
How you doing? Alright, we are all here, ready? We'll get started right away here. Uh, Adam is real, he's not here. So, we'll move on to the next item. Snow removal policies, next item on the...
Minutes.
Oh, minutes approval, okay. If you don't put it on the agenda, I won't remember.
It's on there.
Oh yeah, I see it. That's the first thing. Has everybody had a chance to read the minutes from last month?
Uh, yes.
I have a motion to approve the minutes.
Make a second?
All in favor?
Aye.
The minutes have been approved. Now we'll get into business. The second item on the agenda is snow removal policy. We've never really had one in the town. We, uh, contracted, uh, Ryan Paul to remove the snow this time. And we received the bill for that. The job we did. And, uh... But what I wanna do is decide when do we wanna call him to have him do snow removal. I mean, is it three inches and above? The cost for one time doing Pearl Street, doing this parking lot and the front apron and the dumpsters, uh, was four hundred and fifty-five dollars. So is that something we wanna do? We should set a limit to where we start doing that. And even Pearl Street, he, he can't go all the way to the bricks. Um, so it may not make sense to do it at three inches because he's not gonna be taking off that much snow. So we might wanna sit that, that...
That never ever has been plowed. Nobody wanted to be responsible, just let it melt off. Years ago, we never even done anything except what the county did. Then everybody else used to fend for themselves, there's a lot of, well, you probably remember.
Yeah.
All the guys got bobcats or something that is, thought they're doing it on their own. We never ever did have a policy and the only time this, we ever cleaned up this place was when they had opened over there. Was never open, we just, cause maybe the parking lot, we never did do that because they let them go out that way instead of going down that hill. No, there's never ever been a policy, but it's, everybody just jumped in, took care of theirself.
I know the first couple of years I lived here, there were a lot of, I heard a lot of people complaining about certain areas not getting plowed. One of them was Pearl Street, then it makes it very difficult, um, for the people going to church. So...
Usually the guy, custodian at the church takes care of cleaning all that all for church.
He did say he does try to do the parking spaces for church, but he doesn't do Pearl Street.
Right. Okay, he does that with the brush. Okay, but he can't, he can't do it if it gets above a certain amount of snow. Or if it's too wet.
Remember one time, probably called me and went out and cleaned it off. Went after we cleaned it off, I got another call, cause it still plugged his driveway. Damn, he's doing damn.
So, um... I think the, the, the amount of snow on Pearl Street should probably be significant before we spend the money to plow that.
Agreed.
So, do you think this snow was enough to do that?
Personally, I, I think so. I, I think we got, what, six inches?
Yeah, between five and six, I think is what they said we had. So, I think we, we should set that at maybe five inches.
I think you'll be okay with that.
And then, um, I believe that this area, the parking lot here and the dumpsters, probably maybe four inches, a little less because they use this a lot. For the taproom and if it's during, if it's Monday through Wednesday, maybe not right away if it's gonna warm up, but...
Maybe it should be three, so make sure the parking lot is safe and secure.
Okay, but if it, if it snows on Sunday night, there's no reason to plow it Monday, Tuesday and Wednesday. Uh, and if it's gonna warm up and it melts off, then, so I think we go by, play it by ear. And I'll let Ryan know. Right, and so we'd have to do it then.
I mean, there's nothing wrong with having a policy, but at the end of the day, I think you guys are gonna have to decide from snow to snow, is it time to plow or isn't it?
Right, and I think we do have to have a depth limit, so we don't, we don't get plowings, plowings at two inches or, you know...
Uh, when you were talking with Ryan, did you mention, uh, any call out, having call out services? Would that be something we, we talk to about and see, is there, is there an up charge if we don't have a specific threshold and we're just all waiting?
He's open to us calling him and letting him know, hey, we do need a plow.
But I do like that idea, cause each, each instance might be, might be different with what the, the future forecast is looking like as well.
Right. But as far, as for a general policy, maybe five inches on Pearl Street and three inches here.
Like that.
Okay. And I'll have that conversation with Ryan, that's gonna be the general guidelines, but I'll call him every time.
Visual calls, I like that.
Yeah. Okay, the next item on the agenda is the Franklin County Area Planning Commission member. Uh, we currently don't have anyone on the area, the APC. And so we're gonna need to look for a volunteer to sit on that commission.
Maybe we ask again at the June meeting?
It's nice to have somebody that knows a little bit about what they're doing.
About zoning.
To be on there rather than somebody, it's not necessarily something that's fun to do on job training for. But it's not rocket science. It's easy enough to pick it up if, if somebody's willing to read the zoning code and sort of understand the logic behind it, which is essentially that we don't wanna prevent people from do, from enjoying their own property as long as the way they're enjoying it doesn't screw up the neighbor's enjoyment of their property. And so if you, if you understand that is the logic behind it and that you have to set rules, rules and limits have to be set somewhere, then, then you're willing to sit in judgment over people in terms of have, are they pushing the rules too far or are they, are they not? Then, then you can serve usefully on the area planning. You know what I mean? That's really what it comes down to.
Okay.
You don't wanna get somebody that, that is afraid to make a decision. And you don't wanna get something, and you don't wanna get somebody that's gonna be paralyzed by indecision because there's two different people that they may be offending, kind of, you know? You have to choose who you're gonna offend. But like I said, you got somebody that's willing to sit there and listen and kind of learn. You don't have to, people don't have to know every little cringe or zoning code because it's all, it's easy enough to look up on an as needed basis to, to find out things like, you know, what's the setback in your three zone?
Right.
For example.
That's easy enough to look up.
Right, so I mean, so...
Okay, what, I think what I'll do is, uh, I'll put something in the village voice on Facebook to see if there's any interest. Uh, and then we might have Doug post something on the website to see if there's any interest in that position. And in January, we all revisit it.
And who, who's our person that came off?
Then.
Yeah.
Danny was on it?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
That's what I mean, it's, it's totally kosher for one of you three to be on it. Okay?
Okay.
It's also kosher, I'm not saying it was, it's also kosher to say, Danny, you wanna keep doing it? You see what I'm saying?
Okay. Alright, so we'll bring that up again in January. Uh, the next thing on the agenda is the election cycle. I tried calling Franklin County today and Ruth and they're, they're, they're out today, so...
Okay. Well, so the ordinance that I put together, I left blank with the dates because I mean, I understand that they sent you something that said, oh, this is the, if you wanna join in the even numbered cycle, this is, you gotta do it before the end of the year. Read the statute, I don't think that's what the statute says. I think it's, I mean, the, the statute defines municipal elections as being twenty twenty-seven, twenty thirty-one, twenty thirty-five, twenty thirty-nine. It actually sets that out. And it also says that, in my view, that if you want to change your election cycle, you have to do it during the calendar year, before the calendar year of the municipal election. So if the next municipal election's twenty twenty-seven, it would have to be done in twenty twenty-six.
But then it could be changed so that the election isn't in twenty twenty-seven.
Exactly.
Okay.
Exactly. Uh, essentially, well, actually I didn't think that. No, that, I, I, I don't wanna miss, I don't wanna misspeak or mislead there. If we wait till twenty twenty-six to do it, there's still, we, we, we would still have to have some, we would still have to have some kind of an election in twenty twenty-seven because your guys' terms are ending at the end of twenty twenty-seven. And you can't extend... No. You guys got, these, the, the last municipal election was in twenty twenty-three.
Okay.
And so they served twenty-four, twenty-five, twenty-six and twenty-seven. So there would still have to be some kind of an election in twenty twenty-seven if we change this next year because you guys can't extend the term of any current office holder by changing this ordinance. What you would be doing would be chopping the people elected in twenty twenty-seven short. They would either get three-year terms or you could divide it up to where two of them get one year and two of them get three year so that you're then, every two years, half the people are up. You see what I'm saying? Now, uh, but if you, if, if you wanna read the, uh, law, the way that the Franklin County clerk is trying to read it, you could pass an ordinance tonight, which says, we're not gonna have our next election in twenty twenty-seven. We're gonna have it in twenty twenty-six. And we're gonna chop off our, we're gonna shorten our own existing terms. So that our terms aren't up at the end of twenty twenty-seven, they're up at the end of twenty twenty-six.
Okay.
And if people want to run, they have to do it next year. They have to start that process, you know, like in January, February. Okay? I still, that's still not the way that I've ever read or understood the statute, but if Franklin County is going to not raise a fuss about it, I can't foresee anybody raising a fuss about chopping your own terms short.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yes.
Okay? And that's, but that's why I left it blank.
Because if we don't, if we do have it in twenty twenty-seven, it could potentially cost us ten thousand dollars.
Yeah, there's a contested election.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
The statute has been very clear for many, many years as well that if there are not contested seats, then there is no election. You can't even have one if you want one unless there are contested seats.
Okay. And then, uh, if you run Republican and Democrat, you have to state that by January?
Yep.
And then if you run independent, it has to be by June?
Yep.
Okay.
At, right now, all three of you are listed as independents. So, but yeah, so like I said, it doesn't... That's just, so, so the other, but, but the other... So, so you, you, you could do this in one of two ways. You could either say, yep, we're all, we're all just gonna stay on four year, we're all gonna be elected on the same year. All four of us at the same time, all four of you at the same time. So that would be twenty twenty-six, twenty, twenty thirty, twenty thirty-four, twenty thirty-eight, so forth.
You can also decide on two-year terms as well.
I don't know that you, no, you can't really decide on two-year terms permanently. What you can decide on is the first year, the first time you do this, two of you will only have two-year terms to, to get it, to get the stagger established. But after that, everybody has four. That's the law, everybody has four.
Everybody has.
Except for this special case of switching from odd to even. And then potentially switching from everybody wants to stagger. So in short, if you wanna stagger them next year, you have to decide, two of the seats are gonna be two-year terms and two of them are gonna be four-year terms. Elected next year, and then the two-year people. The two, two offices that only get two years at the next election would be up again in twenty twenty-eight, but for four-year terms.
Okay. Other than having a consistent voice in between a change, what's the real benefit of doing a stagger here as opposed to just everybody at once?
Theoretically, you don't have a situation where the whole administration changes the laws. Yep. I mean, the chances of that happening might be remote, but, but I think they're not zero. And I'm not even saying that that's necessarily a bad thing in all cases.
So should we, so we can opt, if we go to twenty twenty-six, that those would be four-year terms?
Yeah, absolutely. Yep, absolutely.
Okay.
And that's certainly much simpler than trying to institute the stagger. Because if you're trying to institute stagger, you gotta, there's all this like, well, which one's gonna be two, which one's gonna be four?
Okay. So is your recommendation then to, to make?
I don't know that I have a recommendation at all on it.
No, as far as, as, what I'm saying is, um, should we pass the ordinance to get it before the deadline that Franklin County has set?
Well, if you want to institute this even numbered election in twenty twenty-six, you must do it now.
To me, it seems like that that's the cleanest way to do it. That keeps us from having an off-year election in twenty twenty-seven with the potential of paying for it. But then twenty, twenty twenty-six will be the end of our terms.
What did you, what did you say it would cost us to have?
It could be as much as ten thousand dollars. Actually, it could be as much as fifteen thousand dollars if nobody shares that election with us. Uh, but she said normally it's somebody else is sharing it, like Batesville.
Batesville is certainly going to have the election in twenty twenty seven.
Right. So it'll be shared with Batesville. So anywhere, say, anywhere between seven and fifteen thousand dollars is what it could be. So guys, what do you want to do?
You know, we're saving the town money. That that sounds nice. Theoretically, it's just a risk of what, if someone contests, then we actually have to have the official official election. If not, did it for nothing, but also changing it for nothing really isn't, I don't think, a bad thing. Like, there's no real harm in moving it. Cuts us short. I'm personally okay with that. I don't, I don't mind that. So for, to prevent a potential risk, I'd I'd go, I'd say, go ahead and approve the ordinance.
Well, we'd have to, the ordinance, the numbers aren't in the.
Numbers to be filled in, but how how it was drafted.
And what do you think, Dave?
I think it is all staying the same because that's my opinion. That's just wasting ten to fifteen thousand dollars when it could do it when the election year comes up. It's been this way forever in Oldenburg.
Well, the election now is on odd years.
Yeah.
And so if it remains on an odd year, then we would have to pay between seven and ten thousand dollars. If we go to a even years, it'll be free because it's during the general election.
Well, I know we never ever had to pay anything.
Just because no one ever ran.
No, that's right.
Right.
It's never anybody ever.
Right.
So we just decided not to ever change it because save the money.
So now there could, if somebody runs, um, for the office, then it could potentially cost us between seven and fifteen thousand dollars if we stay even. So and with the the climate, the way it's been, I'm thinking that.
But look how many, look how many resumes we received for council seat. Look how many resumes we received for police. We may not.
So what do you think?
We're going to save the town money. It's all right with me. You guys appear a lot longer than me.
Okay, so to make it clear, what we're voting on, we're voting on um, this this election cycle ordinance where we move to the even years and have our election in twenty twenty six. And then four-year terms. Do I get a motion to approve?
I'd make a motion.
Can I second? I'll second it. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. So a lot of this is going to go away, right? That's in this ordinance?
Yep.
Okay. But you got a copy of that, didn't you?
Uh, yeah. Uh, so I'm changing paragraph one to say the next town election shall occur in twenty twenty six, followed by an election in twenty thirty and each fourth year thereafter.
Okay, that's good.
The elections for town offices shall be held during general elections. Uh, I would say we do away with paragraph three altogether. All three town board offices shall be elected in twenty twenty six. Clerk treasurer shall be elected in twenty twenty six to serve a four-year term commencing January first, twenty twenty seven. The next election for this office shall occur
No, anyone?
Twenty thirty. And then we get rid of, get rid of the last sentence out of that paragraph because we're doing short terms. Uh, take the term of office of each town officer. Shall be four years. Associate person elected to town board in twenty twenty six shall serve persons elected. Persons elected to town board office, town board in twenty twenty six shall serve a four-year term commencing January first, twenty twenty seven. The next election for this office shall occur twenty thirty. And we will get rid of paragraph nine. So see if my, Tyler, seeing my changes makes sense.
Will this have to be read again at the January meeting?
If you want it to take effect, it's got to be done. It's got, it's got to be, it's got to be totally adopted before the end of, before the end of the year.
Okay.
So we're going to have to meet and read it again before the end of the year?
Yep.
And what's the time lapse between signing this and reading it again? Is it two weeks?
Ten days.
Ten days?
Meet before Christmas and New Year, baby.
I'll be in Texas.
Okay.
But I can sign it. I mean, we can, we can do it live.
Yeah, absolutely.
Checks out, John.
I'll try.
Nail this.
Well, like I said, I I just, I tried to make it one that. Now, I, again, guys, I'm I'm not trying to. My reading of the statute has always been that this is something we could only have.
Got to sign this.
Franklin County has a different opinion. They're the ones that would be running and paying for the election. Your guys' terms are the ones that are being cut short. So who's really got a beef?
And then get a test. You'll be.
Um, so I want to make very clear. We have to have a special meeting.
Yeah. Yep.
And what is today? The sixteenth? So it'd have to be, I leave the twenty ninth, so.
You want to do it on the twenty sixth?
We can do it.
Tyler, Dave?
Boxing Day, baby.
Twenty sixth.
Friday, that's twenty sixth. Kwanzaa! As well.
It is Kwanzaa.
What time do you guys want?
What time?
You guys decide.
I'm open all day.
Same. I will be in Lawrenceburg most of the day. So you want to try at five o'clock again? Is that okay?
That'd be fine. Then we can be fluid there if you don't, if you're on the way back and.
Yeah, probably that's for running a hair leak today, you guys.
Okay, so let's take care of, um.
What time?
Five.
Five o'clock on this twenty sixth. The amended salary ordinance is, this is the second meeting.
Yes.
Oh, the other thing, Kate, while I'm thinking of it, when we get, when they pass this thing on the twenty sixth, make sure we we shoot it over to Mesa Rabel.
Yes.
Sometime before January first.
Okay. Will do. The salary of town council members is four thousand two hundred twelve dollars per year. Salary of clerk treasurer is fifteen thousand seven hundred ninety five per year. Salary of town marshal will be twenty six thousand eight hundred and deputy will be ten thousand. Total police out salary thirty six thousand eight hundred. Salary of the utility clerk is thirteen thousand one hundred. Hourly miscellaneous work should be seven twenty five per hour. Town hall cleaner, six hundred per year. Utility board member shall receive twenty five per meeting. The hourly wage for training for the utility clerk shall be twenty five per hour. Hourly wage for extra work done by utility board members shall be twenty five an hour. And hourly wage for training of the clerk treasurer shall be twenty five an hour.
Okay, does that take care of that?
That should go into a January one.
Okay. Um.
This is me too.
Seventeen eighty-two notice.
Correct if I'm wrong, but I think this just means that the budget we set has been adopted. There were some changes that we weren't expecting on it. For reasons still unbeknownst to me, we're about fifteen thousand different than what what we thought we were were budgeting in the general fund. So we will have to go through the additional appropriation process.
Did you get the stuff?
Yes.
Okay.
So the wheels are turning on that. We have notified the newspaper. You know, it hasn't been published yet, but um, I'm working with the clerk treasurer from Sunman. She's been so helpful. So thank you. I will address that in January. So this will be signed, signed and submitted, and then we're done with budget for twenty six.
Okay.
Uh, the next one is me too. There's a new notice from Franklin County.
Oh, planning and zoning. What did we do? I didn't, I haven't seen this yet. Uh, subdivisions must have approval. APC, no plat or replat of a division of land resulting in a subdivision shall be filed with the author, recorded by the court, and gets a congressional approval by the area planning commission. That's not me. Subpoor shall have been signed and certified in the plat by the president with exceptions. An administrative replat, a division of land for the transfer of a tract between adjoining lots provided with no additional principal use building sites and no non-conforming lots are created by the division. Such divisions should not be recorded and approved by the executive director. Okay, so basically this means that once, once somebody's already had their subdivision approved, if they decide we want to reshuffle the plats, that are the number of lots within the plat, in other words, have had, you know, to to have one to join, he want to absorb another one or something like that. That they can do that without having to go through the whole process from step one as long as their reshuffling doesn't increase the number of buildings.
Then we need to vote on.
Yeah. Yeah.
I can see that, that saves a lot of headaches.
Yeah.
Do you want to look at it?
That's the kind of thing that our APC board member will be worrying about.
Hey, do I get a motion to accept this? New ordinance?
I'd make a motion. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And do I sign this here at the bottom where it says received by?
Yeah. I will promptly send Franklin County this time.
I can see this being a big help.
There you go.
It's been times here.
Next thing on the agenda is a resolution to transfer funds, general engineering to federal grant matching fund.
Yep, so we are running low on our matching fund funds. Um, so we will be transferring fifty thousand to account to play, pay for upcoming invoices for two weeks.
And this is for the Water Street project?
Yes, for the Water Street project.
Okay.
So we want to sign this resolution. While you guys are signing that, I'll just move on to address my budgeting error that I made. Just really to record it in minutes, but in twenty twenty four, when I first took over, I realized belatedly that I did not pay the Eagle Tire company enough money. They were about six thousand dollars short. So I corrected that error by attaching that six thousand dollars to their spring distribution. They get paid in both the spring and the fall. And, um, in doing so, I gave them an extra six thousand for the year. So I went over what was budgeted for the year. Um, so I did talk to the state board of accounts. They had said, you'll just have to be overdrawn. Make a note of what happened for what we did. But I wanted to bring that up and record it in.
They didn't get the extra money. They just got the money that was due then.
Yeah, so they got short money in twenty twenty four and they got too much money in twenty twenty five.
Okay.
And the audit she's talking about is something that always happens anyway. It's not triggered by this.
All right, and the last thing on the agenda is as all of you know, or most of you know, we have two fine gentlemen retiring this month. Bill Drummond and Eric Minner are leaving us at the end of the, at the end of the year. And we wanted to recognize you and thank you very much for your service.
Thank you.
And we have a few gifts for you.
I would shake hands, but I'd rather have a hug. My kids mixed things up, so I don't know who to.
Okay.
So we might have to swap.
I'd like to thank everybody who, who, so many memories. Twenty-eight years. You know, just some of the things I remember is, we had a Freudian Fest. You know, the last day when it ends. Few people spend all night talking with me, not appreciating. But then you know, they.
You're right.
Good.
And I'll never forget that. And I'll say, there's a lot, a lot of things like that in years.
I think it's a good one. No, I mean, with Doug with the camera to hand.
Acting like you're together.
Okay.
Whatever you say.
Thank you, Keith.
All right.
Nice. Thanks again.
Thank you, Bill.
Never forget, never forget. Hey, thank you, Eric. Thank you. Thank the town, all the people in it, organizations. You know, nuns, priests, same thing, you know, it's all. Just started to explain this town.
It is.
It's been, it's been great.
It's probably the best town I could retire in. I grew up in here when I was a young kid, when Dave's young. That's how long ago it's been. Uh, forty-eight, fifty-four, and no living in Auburn. And I'll come back here, start here, come back here again. So good time to quit. If I die, I'll get planted in that.
But thank you very much for what you've done. But thank you very much for what you've done.
You are, thank you.
He wants a picture.
The ball wants a picture, though.
All four of them.
All four of them.
She wants to picture all four of them.
Wild, are they?
Yeah. I think we need to get one of Adam and his wife over here too now.
You didn't know you were going to do this tonight.
Where do you want me?
Let's get back in. Put a little chair right in the middle, one right in front of us. All of us.
Okay.
Yeah, sure, Ben, right here.
There you go.
The new and the old. Good thing Doug isn't here, otherwise I'd be on Facebook.
Now listen, look.
Yes, we're good, wait. Add a picture.
All right. Thank you very much. Okay, let's continue on, um, old business, um, chain property.
Something's filed, yeah, it's filed.
Okay. Okay, good. Um, and for you, Dave, the, the sawmill tree removal went smoothly. And everything's cleaned up and back to normal.
Back to normal.
All right.
Cut it all the way to the ground.
Great. And what is the Duke update?
Oh, um, I have been working with, if you recall, they kind of lost our community hashtag. So I've been, I've been working with a guy who's been really helpful, um, and I have a map. Drawn by Jeff Paul, he circled the ones that are missing. The verticals, and they're going to come out. No specific date on when that's going to be fixed, but, but, so maybe I'm.
Those are not the additionals, or?
They're the, we're paying for 35, we have 31.
Okay.
That have been updated.
Okay.
Four that are missing.
So are we going to need to do additional ones beyond that?
We discussed that we were going to look at that next year.
Next year, okay.
Yeah.
All right. So it will be additional to those.
Right, right, if we, if we want to.
Okay. Uh, do, is, do I have anything out from? The audience?
I'd like to report that redevelopment has taken place in Oldenburg today. Uh, John Burber's name is how it's trailed up on Eric. Was recipient of, uh, license. It was crushed and put in dumpster, I don't know what's all done yet or not. But it's in the process of getting cleaned up by the corner.
All right. That's good.
Now, every trailer in Oldenburg is gone.
I'll get one in tomorrow.
All right, is there anything else? Can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Second that?
All in favor?
Aye.
You know, I missed my favorite partner in the meeting.